The gavel is up. It is now down. I'd like to call the Linmar School Board Regular Meeting to order. Can we please determine a quorum?
Buckle.
Here.
Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Walt.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Quorum is present at five o'clock.
Okay.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Right, for audience communication, we have, I think, four today, JT?
We do, yes.
The first communication comes from Kayla Schaefer. It reads, "Good morning, I am writing the school board today ahead of the discussion to bring seventh and eighth graders back in person. I do think that this is something that should be strongly considered. Grade seven through eight do not have the same mental development as high school grades to beat tasks switching each and every day. These kids would benefit mentally being in school. I do understand the concern and the precautions our district is taking. Excelsior has done a great job with COVID numbers. Since winter break, in Excelsior there has been one case that was announced. This is .08 percent. That truly is a remarkable number. The high school average is one to two a day, currently at .32 percent, also great. However, we are not comparing apples to apples. Currently, in a perfect world of 50/50, as I don't have a direct number split, the middle schools house 1,181 students, intermediate 1,184, and high school 2,179. So on an A-day, intermediate has 1,184 kids in each school, high school has 1089, and middle school has 590. The intermediate school is held in person, what is our rationale for one in-person but not the other when they are holding twice as many kids? Have we looked at their numbers of percentage positive of the intermediate? Research is proving this isn't being spread in the schools. It's about the lifestyles outside of schools. Seventh and eighth graders hold a similar lifestyle to fifth and sixth versus comparing them to ninth and 12th. What about elementary schools that house over 590 kids? I know that elementary isn't an even split, but if we divide 3,100 by seven on average, there's about 442 kids going every day. What is their average positive? I think it's appropriate for us to have an action plan that says if over X percent of teachers and students are missing, we go back to hybrid, and if X percent above that are missing, we go online. Unfortunately, with high-level number crunching, there doesn't seem to be statistics to match up to the benefits of having the seventh and eighth grade hybrid without trying in person. To make it clear, it would be nice to see direct statistics of all schools individually. That being said, I'd love to see in-person at all levels, but I understand that at the high school level, this just probably isn't as realistic as middle school. High schoolers are more mature and resilient to handle hybrid. Thanks for your time, I know you are all doing the best you can with what you have. Kayla Schaefer." The second communication comes from Jody Goldsmith, Sue Kraus, John Harms, and Polly Wood, and it reads, "Dear Superintendent Biscard and members of the board, we are writing to publicly address early separation at Linmar. In a response to an inquiry on early separation, the board president stated the following: We discuss that if our financial situation changes, we may be able to offer a package next year. Because of recent events, we are asking the board to reconsider offering the early separation package for the 2020-21 school year retirees. It was reported in the Des Moines Register on January 11th that the Iowa Department of Education announced the second round of federal dollars allocated for Linmar will be $2,086,675. Surely, this places Linmar in an excellent position to make an early separation offering yet this year. Would this not be a significant financial change to help reduce the cost of COVID expenses and balance the general budget? We appreciate your reconsideration regarding the early separation package for this school year in the light of the new COVID relief funds, and look forward to a response to our request." Third, we have a communication from, it's signed by several people, Alexis Newport, Leah Hallers, Connor French, and Lauren Werner, and it reads, "To the Linmar School Board, the Linmar students of Iowa Big are disappointed that our program is being cut. However, we are further disappointed by the misconceptions about the program shared at a previous board meeting. In order to be transparent, we are providing a summary of what an education at Iowa Big is really like and what you are choosing to step away from. It is a misnomer that Iowa Big is only a project-based school. Rather, Big is a learner-centered program that relies heavily on projects as a vehicle to drive learning. The emphasis on being learner-centered rather than school-centered is the magic that makes Iowa Big successful and so different from traditional educational settings. It is by far the biggest draw for students electing to attend Big. An integral part of the program is the freedom it gives to students. Big allows a student to take a variety of classes and learn content in a way that's engaging and challenging, which allows students to explore ideas without having to narrow themselves to one career choice or path they might want to pursue in the future. Projects and seminars allow for self-discovery as well as creating an alternative school environment. It is true that projects are a large focus in the program. Students at Big can choose from inbound projects that partners have offered, or outbound projects, where students create and formulate a project, and then find supporting community partners or mentors that help to lead learning. The focus is always on broadening the student's awareness of their community and their learning. Students have opportunities to show they can master a standard through project work. For example, if a student writes a press release or presents a project to a board of directors, they might hit a journalism or a communication standard. A student studying the efficiency of solar power might be able to hit a science standard in the curriculum. Since it is not likely that a student could hit all standards in a project, those standards not met through the project are taught in a more traditional manner called seminars. Waitrooms, what Iowa Big calls assignments, are still assigned as a way for students to demonstrate their learning and hit standards. Seminars are also personal and are designed to be shaped to the student and their needs. For example, in a government class, we might discuss ongoing relevant topics like the Twenty-Fifth Amendment. Waitrooms act as the quizzes or tests for the classes, and our teachers make sure that we understand the standard. For example, in France, the latest waitroom required that a student put together a future month -- wait, back up. For example, in finance, the latest waitroom required that a student put together a future monthly budget, including groceries, mortgage payments, phone bills, et cetera. Real-world learning is coupled with meeting standards at all times. Part of Iowa Big's efforts strive to develop students not only academically, but also as employer-valued individuals through a class called Agile, which is unique to Iowa Big. During this class, students learn 21st-century productivity skills that employers have recommended as essential. These values include purpose, responsibility, authenticity, appreciation of humanity, leadership, creativity, and community. These values not only drive Big, but drive what students do. Learning is happening all the time at Iowa Big, whether you recognize it or not. It is acquiring not only knowledge, but behaviors, skills, values, attitudes, and more. In addition to misconceptions about what Iowa Big is and what Iowa Big does, there were concerns brought up at a previous board meeting about three main topics: assessability, resources, and continuity of learning. While all of these are very valid concerns, Iowa Big is able to address those issues if and when they exist and come to a solution. Iowa Big offers transportation for those who cannot drive, which is a very small percentage of those who attend Big. When a group is meeting with a partner, there is always an opportunity to meet in the Big space, therefore, transportation is not an issue in this case. When a student needs to go into the community, rides are provided. In addition, many resources are available to the Big space. There are desktop computers, a 3D printer, cameras, a kitchenette, a makerspace, a stage with sound system, two large conference rooms, and two small meeting rooms, all used almost daily. In addition, whatever isn't provided at Big is often provided by partners. In the very rare case that resources are still unavailable at Iowa Big or with partners, resources are often available in the community for free. The issue of continuity of learning is misguided. Iowa Big assesses students with the same standards that are used at a student's home school. We would argue, in fact, that the standards are hit in a more engaging and realistic fashion than those hit in a conventional classroom. Instead of learning Shakespeare, students read books that shine a light on modern issues such as immigration, climate change, or an ever-changing political climate. Despite the content, the same standards are required to be met. Again, some standards are also met in student project work. Recently, a group presented Superintendent Biscard with the money-saving option of using solar energy at the high school. The number of science, math, and English standards met in this project was astounding, and students had the benefit of feeling like their learning could improve their community. Reading a book to gain insight into whatever issue your project is involved in could hit many different English standards. Higher-level thinking skills are applied daily in discussing and studying real-life issues such as in government, where students discuss and analyze modern historical events like the chaos of the Capitol on January 6th. Students learn this information from current, real-life scenarios, not just a textbook. We are taught, for instance, to constantly consider the value and correctness of a source. If the concern is teachers, the teachers at Big have many years of experience, like Linmar's own Dee Westbrook, who has taught for Linmar for well over 30 years. It is clear to us that it is likely Linmar will not reverse their decision to cut the program. However, it troubles us that Iowa Big, neither students or staff, was never contacted for help or ideas when creating Venture Academics. It seems to us that you are walking away from nearly a decade of knowledge, expertise, and improvement without learning important information that might inform your new program. I think you can see that we feel like that this is a slap in the face. Do you really believe that there is nothing to be learned from your time with Iowa Big? That said, the students and staff are still willing to help. We wouldn't expect Venture to copy everything at Iowa Big, but Big does have eight years of experience dealing with learner-centered and project-based learning. Learning from Big would help overcome some early hurdles and help your program avoid some of the mistakes Big had to make along the way to learn in advance. It would be naive to believe that Iowa Big is perfect, but from years of trial and error, the Venture program can benefit from Big's help. In addition, it is very concerning that no student input was given in the development of Venture. Students are heavily consulted and relied upon when considering our educational opportunities at Iowa Big. We are given a voice at the table, and this is instrumental to our success. One of the biggest joys to the students of Big is to see our work help our community. Raising over $20,000 to plant trees in our community, or working to develop an after-school program for immigrant kids is what we do. It is who we are, and we would be willing to help Venture Academics build their programs successful as well. We all want what is best for the students and the community. However, if there is further interest in keeping Iowa Big, members of the school board are invited to come into the Big space. We invite you to sit in on a team meeting, a one-on-one, a seminar, or take a look at our learning platform. Our doors are open. Any confusion, concerns, questions, or comments are able to be answered at any time, as the school board should know about a program that they provide for their school. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna grab a drink here. That's all right. And lastly, this communication comes from Leah Hallers, also a student at Iowa Big, and it reads, "Members of the Linmar School Board, my name is Leah Hallers, I am currently a senior at Linmar High School and second-year Iowa Big student. I am writing this letter on behalf of Iowa Big students and the future students' education. I am disappointed in the decision of the Linmar Board to discontinue the Iowa Big educational opportunity of student-based learning next year because of budget cuts and to create their own project-based opportunity in-house. I am writing this letter to the Board to reconsider taking this educational experience away from future learners. You're probably thinking, why is a senior asking us to reconsider, or why does she even care? I am asking you to reconsider because I am a student that has been in a traditional learning environment at Linmar and a student at a student-based learning environment at Iowa Big, where students can take control of their learning. I have firsthand experience on how Iowa Big has helped me grow as a learner in just two years and helped me develop into the individual I am today. The educational opportunity that Iowa Big provided me throughout these two years has helped me not just become prepared for college, future career interests, and jobs. It has helped me create a story and projects that are bigger than myself. I can honestly say that I wouldn't be the same student, individual, entrepreneur, innovator, and leader that I have become if Linmar did not provide Iowa Big as an option for students. Every student should have the opportunity that I have been given to be valued. Given new opportunities outside of a classroom, getting to be involved hands-on with our community and business professionals, have the ability to network before college, and the ability to create their own growth story that doesn't just involve notes, content, and standardized tests in a never-ending cycle. I decided to do Iowa Big because I figured out notes and tests were not the way I learned. I needed a different learning style, an environment outside of the classroom, hands-on, and be able to apply my learning and interests to the community I live in. When I first attended Iowa Big my junior year, I was a student who was a bystander. I would go along with what anyone said and not explore my interests. In the beginning of the year, I was on a project with all my friends. We partnered with Kenwood Elementary to create a mural that would speak to every kid in their diverse school. However, this project ran into many roadblocks that held this project back from its full potential. I learned a variety of life lessons that will serve me past high school and college. I also worked on a project with Cedar Rapids River Kings where I designed a logo for their kids' club to keep kids active, a program created by us Iowa Big students. Thanks to this project, I have received firsthand experience in the business world, something I might have not otherwise had the opportunity to do. I had a one-on-one meeting last year with one of the teachers at the end of the year, and she challenged me to come up with my own project over the summer and run it as my own. As a junior, I sat there and was thinking, there is no way I'm going to come up with a project and run it by next year. August came sooner than I expected, and I knew it was my turn to step up as a leader. After the Durachio, I finally knew what I wanted my project to revolve around. I presented the idea to bring chainsaw artists to Marion, to take trees from the Durachio and turn them into art. Then I thought we could auction them off to raise money to replant trees through Trees Forever. This project, called Splinter, started its planning process October 2nd, 2020, and ended November 29th. By the end of the auction, my team raised $25,514. We split this money up 40%, went to the artists, and 60% went to Trees Forever. Grand total, $14,450, was presented to Trees Forever on January 7th. This project helped my community rebuild our tree canopy after we were devastated by the Durachio, and we turned it into something bigger than ourselves. It will leave a legacy for future generations, has challenged thinking on how to handle debris, and help to heal an entire community. I would like to challenge your thinking about creating this new in-house program by asking a few upfront questions. Are you truly bringing Iowa Big type models in-house? When did you hold a forum to get input into the design of this type of program? If the mission and vision of Linmar School District is stated as, "We, the Linmar community, are dedicated to the development of lifelong learners by equipping them with the knowledge and skills to confidently meet life's challenges as responsible, productive citizens," this is saying with this purpose you support students' learning, then when did you connect with students about the pros and cons of an Iowa Big-type program in creating this type of program on your own? As students, we already have a proven and successful model and program, one that students, parents, community members, and business professionals trust and see the impact of. When have you consulted Iowa Big and their eight-plus years of experience? The correct and incorrect assumptions, failed and successful experiments, their model and tools, or how Iowa Big worked to build the Iowa Big culture? Finally, did you ask anyone at all, or was this just a unilateral decision made by the administration? If you would have asked me two years ago what I wanted to do or who I was, I would have had no clue how to respond to that question. Also, would not be standing in front of you, speaking in public. These last two years at Iowa Big have provided me with experiences I would never receive in the traditional high school model. Iowa Big provided me with the means to further develop my learning, explore who I am, what I want to do, and what I am interested in. I now know my major will be business and marketing in college because of the experiences I've had at Iowa Big. Every student should have the opportunity to experience all that Iowa Big has to offer. Iowa Big has over eight years of experience, which has allowed them to make corrections to their environment. I strongly feel that no program created at Linmar High School compared to the environment Iowa Big has developed over the years. Iowa Big has provided me with the ability to be more than just a student, who takes up another seat in a classroom where the teacher barely knows my name. At Iowa Big, I am a learner, a student with ideas and dreams, a human being, a businessperson, an entrepreneur, an innovator, and I am a leader. I know this is because of Iowa Big, my voice, my opinion, and learning experience is opportunities matter. I invite you to reconsider your decision with the Iowa Big program. This program changes lives. I thank you for your time and consideration. Feel free to reach out with any further questions regarding my experience with the program."
Thank you, JT. Okay, next we will move on to informational reports, discussions, and presentations. Board visit to Westfield. Many of us were able to come. Would someone like to comment? Anyone?
I thought it was very interesting, you know, the principal men is there with the whole breakdown of how they're doing with their testing. And as we went into the classroom, you know, I saw a lot of enthusiasm from the standpoint of the teachers, but also the students. You know, as we were watching them pass to go to either lunch or go outside, I don't recall ever a time that I had that many students, you know, wave at us or smile at us as they walked by. I mean, you could see the energy and feel the energy that they had, the classrooms that we walked into, everybody was engaged, the kids were happy to show us or tell us what they were doing, which I think was fantastic. And it was one of those types of things where you go in there and see the energy level that high and know everything is positive, and that was terrific, so.
All right. Anyone else like to make a comment? Only thing I would say is, as always, it was a treat, and it was great to see what was going on, and I hope we can continue those. All right, let's move on to the Policy Committee. Those of you who are there, if you'd like to make a report.
I was kind of having that easily because there were some pretty, like, some new policies surrounding law changes. Shannon, do you have, can you speak more diligently to it than I'm managing to do right now?
I can speak to them. I'm sure they'll be more intelligent here now. Yeah, what Karen's referencing is the new guidance that the state's been working on for a couple of years on physical restraint and seclusion. They've got all their proceedings put together this fall, got these finalized and rolled out to schools in December, so effective January 20th, we have new rules to follow. Good changes, things that we think will be good for us as a system and good for our students and families as well. Please note that as we go through the normal process, that takes two readings to approve policy, but we have already made these changes in practice, effective January 20th, when the law became in effect. We just didn't get much notice. We got December 18th, I think we got notice of the official guidance from IASB and from the state as well, so. So, working through a couple of readings like usual, but the actions are already taking place. Really emphasizing a lot of safety and a lot of documentation and communication with the family. Probably the three biggest changes kind of lumped together in those proceedings for us as well, so. Those would be the biggest things, and those were all, we're scheduled to focus on the 600 series, more of the school operations, but a lot of the 500s were updates from IASB that we spent, spent the majority of our time on, I'd say.
Well, the thing that I thought was really nice about that as we were going over the restraint parts, is that our own people have devised a stricter policy on how to follow through to not only help the student, but to keep the parents informed, and that they have developed some videos for the teachers just with the new guidelines, as you said, January 20th, that they can review and they have to sign off on that. But the nice thing about it also is there's that review that comes at the end, that administrators are involved, and we could sign off on if there's any questions, or a parent has questions, and we could create that open communication and transparency a little bit better than we had in the past, so. To have something that goes above and beyond, I think, was a crucial part that Lisa and her staff put together that made a lot of sense to me, and basically, it covered the student, it covered the teacher, it covered the administrator, and it covered our district in a better format.
Those follow-up meetings Clark's referencing kind of happened informally in the past, and now they are more formalized and documented, and parent involvement with those as well, so. That would definitely be a good step in the right direction.
Okay, we'll move on to Marion City Council.
And our district, so.
Okay, thank you. And the Finance Audit Committee report?
I think we went through kind of the presentation from JT that he's gonna go through in the next couple of meetings, so. Good discussion on that.
Like always, JT's doing a great job of keeping us informed of what's coming up, and especially this year with so many unknowns that we have to prepare for, that I just, I mean, it was a good overview and a good in-depth look for us at where we're at and where we're going and what we need to keep our eye on, and so.
One thing that came up in the discussion, and we received this in the mail, to know who is on the House Education Committee and who's on the Senate Committee. Everybody should have received this, you know, because we talked about that that day, so that's going to be real critical for us moving forward because of the 2.5%, 3%, whatever we're allowed and so on, so. Needless to say, there's a handful of people on that group that are pre-school board members, so we can reach out to some of them, but anyway, I think we do need to reach out to them when we can, so.
Okay, so from that point, we will go on to JT with the budget, please, please.
Yeah, I can jump in there quick as well. We're gonna make a slight adjustment in our schedule for tonight with the storm maybe happening outside, we're not quite sure. But we want to make sure to give the budget the time it really needs with the board. There's a lot of important information in there, but it's also information that we can spend a lot of time on in our next meeting and not feel rushed tonight. So, we're gonna do it kind of in two parts, break it up a little bit. So, tonight's part will be pretty minimal, but a key step for us as well, and that's going to be, actually, at 6:03, we'll just cover that part on the School Budget Review Committee, because that's something new for Linmar, this little additional step, and JT will be covering that during that portion of the agenda. The rest of the content that was covered during Finance Audit and planned to share with the board tonight will push to our next meeting and make that a focus of time to make sure we give it the time it needs, because like a couple of you mentioned, really an important year to get a handle on the budget, not just from JT's perspective, but board level as well, because there's a lot of unique features going on this year that just make it complicated, so. So, we'll come to that more next time.
With that, we move on.
Can I say one more thing about?
Yes, go ahead.
Since we're gonna push most of it till our next meeting, which is two weeks, right?
Correct.
There's not some, okay. If you have time in the next two weeks to reach out to the state legislatures and tell them, I logged into two of the Education Committee meetings today, and they need to hear from us as an urban suburban district, because we're not getting, I mean, we have representation, but it wasn't as strong as it could be, so I would recommend, if you guys have time and you're willing, please reach out and tell them what Linmar needs.
That link that you provided us to comment on that education study bill, the voucher bill, was super useful, so if you haven't already, click that link, it just fills it out right away.
Pretty easy to complete.
You should know that, I'm pretty sure that the comment that you make is published then.
Yeah, it's public record.
So, you can see mine with capital letters and exclamation points for your view.
And mine is written like a formal letter, because I didn't realize it was gonna be, so it's like, "Thank you for taking time," and yeah, so it's public record.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so let's move on to the Cabinet update and return to Learn's point.
Yeah, I'm gonna continue that conversation actually, right where I wanted to start today with legislative advocacy topics as well, so. The two bills I think everybody's referencing that we've been talking about and getting some traction in Iowa, but definitely not enough for the level of importance for them. You know, the first one is the Senate Bill 1064, essentially the require in-school to be 100% open, 100% in-person as well. That bill is really on a fast track, it feels like, and that's what we're hearing from people in Des Moines as well, that they are on a mission to get that through as quickly as possible to get it to the governor's desk for it to be signed. They had a public hearing opportunity this morning as well. I wasn't able to watch, but I did kind of see the summary. I wasn't able to watch, but I did kind of see the summary of it was, there was over 100-plus comments in favor, I'm sorry, opposed to the bill, and only, I think, nine in favor, but it still got through the hearing as well, the process as well, so. Definitely one for us to continue to provide our feedback from a larger suburban, urban district as well, and I think you were part of that meeting today as well, Britt.
Yeah, I did the morning one and then the afternoon one as well. So today was subcommittee meeting, it's moving to full committee on Thursday, and then they want to get it to the Senate for vote either Thursday afternoon or early next week, so for those two bills specifically, you would want to reach out before Thursday so that they have that input for the full committee meeting. But yes, I did the, this morning was the 1065, that was the vouchers, and this afternoon was the 100% online learning, 1064.
Good to know, I was wondering when the next committee meeting was, so that's Thursday.
Thursday.
Yep, and that fits the aggressive timeline I've been hearing as well. On that bill specifically, essentially, once it goes through the process, for it to, if it goes as fast as it possibly could, it could be decided next week and the governor's signature after that, and then essentially it would become the second Monday after it's signed would become law for us, is the timeline that we've heard discussed, so. If it's decided sometime next week, it would be second Monday after that.
There's also a House file version that you can comment on as well, because they're, the House committee, education committees will also meet on their version of the bill, and then it'll all come together, so you can also talk to the House side. But their meetings aren't on Zoom, you have to go in person, so I didn't go to those, obviously, but.
Yep, so definitely one to keep a close eye on. And then the other one that Britt mentioned as well, Senate Bill 1065, this one is a massive bill, 65, 66 pages, a lot of topics in there. Essentially, they're calling it School Choice Bill. Essentially, it's more of a voucher bill, to be perfectly honest, and a fund, laying of funds from public schools into private entities, which is problematic in a lot of different ways. One, the lack of transparency with those funds becomes an issue, the lack of requirements for equity for students, services, and supports would not be the same. Essentially, they wouldn't have to follow the same rules that public schools have to follow, but they would get the same funding, and that funds, those funds would come from public schools essentially, instead of going to public schools in Iowa, go to private entities, so a very concerning bill.
Just like the student formula of like, whatever, ours winds up being like that around $3,000 number, it's like a little bit of this money, and a little bit of this money, and a little bit of this money, like, any different funds that comes in is spelled out as saying like, it's this fund plus this fund plus this fund plus this fund is what would equal that scholarship, is how it's spelled out. Wow.
Yeah, so it's one that, I know in the Senate, there's, it's going to have some pretty smooth sailing, I think, for a lot of ways. The House, I think, will be a little bit different conversation, maybe, and we'll see, so that's something we're going to be very tuned into as well. That would not just have a short, the 100% in-person bill obviously is impactful, but it's a relatively short impact of a bill this year primarily, hopefully to go through this COVID world again, and anytime in our lifetimes, but this bill would have a immediate impact and a long-term impact as well. So it just kind of adds to the concern level and the value, that we need to make sure to take a real strong message on that, too. I saw there was, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, it did go through subcommittee meeting today and the Senate Ed Committee meeting, and the number of messages in support of the bill were minimal compared to the number of messages opposed to the bill, but it still went through both without much of a hesitation, it sounds like, too.
The live public meeting, there were 300 people on there, two people voiced favorability for the bill, 297 voiced opposition, and it still passed out of subcommittee.
When I was scrolling the comments, I didn't see anything in favor of it. It was all public dollars are for public things.
Which really makes you wonder how much commenting, calling, writing really matters anyway, because it sounds like these decisions have been made.
It may not make an impact today, but it shows who they're listening to and that there was opposition, and in my mind, that is worth it as well.
And I think they expected it to get through these two smaller groups relatively easily. I guess the larger scale, that pressure becomes on a larger group of individuals that may have a more diverse thought process as far as impacting their areas as well, and that's where I think the real value for people, board members, administrators, teachers, parents, all of those above will have a much bigger impact the farther we get through this process. I think the 100% in-person bill, everything we're hearing is, like I mentioned earlier, a fast-track process. I think the School Choice Bill has a, has a long road ahead of it to, before it gets through the whole process as well, but something we're going to want to really be tuned into quickly and advocate as we need to for it, because like I said, it will be drastic changes across Iowa. And then the other piece, I shared some talking points with board members earlier, but the other bottom-line piece of it, besides the transparency and the public dollars piece, there is no research out there that shows that that private school, our vouchers actually make a difference in impact and quality for students going forward, so that's the other pieces. It doesn't provide the value that some people might think it does, so.
When I first started reading through the text of the study bill, too, it also spoke specifically to being, having the opportunity to do this if your child's attendance area is a struggling school, and I think that's also important for people to understand, is that they're trying to give people the option to just like bail on schools, and I think we all know that regardless, not regardless of their scholarship dollars or whatever they offer, people are still going to have barriers to that kind of mobility, so you're still looking at the same kids that would be leaving these schools, and we should really be seeking to better education in Iowa instead of giving people the opportunity to leave it.
Another argument that was made this morning that I question, one of the senators said that he's a businessman, and business thrives when there's competition, and if we threaten to take dollars away and students away from public schools, they will do better. But we all know that if you take funding continually away from public schools, it just makes it harder for us to serve our students, so that train of thoughts that's going on, we need to speak against that as well, because that's not how it works in education.
Everything is intended to be private.
It amazes me that they get any support from your smaller rural schools and smaller communities, because they're the ones that are really going to lose on it, because, I mean, I don't want to say we can weather it, because it's a challenge anyway you look at it, but that, that really gets tough, you know, so.
And they don't have the options.
Right.
These are the kinds of schools that they're advocating for school choice for, but there is already no choice there, so we really, like, those schools should be supported by our lawmakers.
Those are, there's other education bills going through obviously as well, but those are the two that really pay close attention to, and I'll keep you up to date as well as things evolve in the course of the next several weeks and months potentially, too, so I think the voucher bill will continue to have a lot of attention drawn to it in upcoming times and the farther it gets through that process. There's a long time for a bill to become the full law, so I'm sure there'll be different iterations of it potentially coming forward, but there's a lot in there right now, so there's a lot to pick away at.
I would say that, from my perspective, I think that this voucher bill is the real existential threat to the district and, you know, education in general, and I would like to see the energy go toward that. I think on the other, I just don't know, I feel like that starts pitting people against each other, because there are a lot of people in our district who are looking for an option to bring their kids back for whatever reason, and, you know, but this other bill, this voucher bill, it is extremely problematic for, you know, a myriad of reasons, and, you know, that's the one I would be really concerned about, honestly. That's just my perspective.
I've also, from one of the people I'm talking to in Des Moines, say that we have a better chance of making a difference on that bill.
I bet.
Than we do on the 100% bill as well.
Yeah, I bet. Because that one.
You never know the value of advocacy for folks, it could certainly make a difference when you don't expect it, but according to people that are really following things carefully and talking to legislators, that's the one they feel like has a better leverage point for us as well. So a lot to keep an eye on, and it's still early in the legislative session, so stay tuned. There's going to be a lot of iterations, I think, of this going forward, so. I'll move into some COVID-related topics, kind of a standing topic for us, it seems like, as well. First of all, I'll give you the vaccination update, this continues to be a hot topic and a very important topic for us, also a very frustrating topic, to be perfectly transparent and honest as well. Everybody knows we need to be patient, there's not enough doses for everybody to receive the vaccine, and we understand that, but I think we all agree educators and teachers need to be prioritized in this process as well. On the positive side, I shared with you kind of the visual from Lynn County Public Health that educators pre-K-12 are in tier one of Phase 1B, so we're pretty high up on the list overall, so that's positive. The challenge is, there are a lot of other people in that group as well, so the rough numbers that we were given on Friday in our conversation with Lynn County Public Health is essentially there are 630,000 people 65 or older that would fall into that tier as well, we're kind of the comparable tier, that are 65 or older or are first responders, and they will either be done in conjunction with educators or before educators, there's some clarification they're going to figure out, but either way, 630,000 is a lot of people, especially when Lynn County's only getting essentially 19,000 doses a week at this stage, so. Obviously not all of those are Lynn County residents, but that's still a huge number across the state of Iowa as well, so I don't say that to be discouraging, but also realize even though we keep hearing they're going to start Phase 1B on Monday, February 1st, that's outstanding to hear, but that's also, we're being told we have to be very realistic, it still will be weeks into months before we're able to get our staff even started, much less completed in that vaccination process. I hope that all those things keep getting better and better, and that are wrong on those estimations, but we have heard that repeatedly from them, that this is going to take a long time, so that savior for us is not anytime on the horizon as far as making our lives easier and better and safer for everybody, too, so. Any questions you have on that one, it gets kind of confusing, I know, with all the different phases and tiers and things you hear in the media as well.
We started our internal prioritization like once we know.
Oh, no. Thank you, that's on my list right here in front of me and didn't even share that, so. The two things we're going to do in the meantime to help us prepare for when our time comes, because we have heard from people that when your time comes, you're given very little notice and you have to go quickly to keep your spot, obviously, we don't want to slow that train down at all, so. Two things we will do this week after we meet in Cabinet tomorrow is get our staff survey ready to roll, just to see how many of our staff, basically, one have either had the vaccine in one way, shape, or form, or opportunity, want the vaccine or do not, just to give us a better number of what we're working with besides our raw total of staff, and then the second one is we'll be finalizing our internal prioritization as well that we will share with staff as well, so they know when our time does come, I doubt they're going to say, "Linmar, you're up, here's your 1,200 vaccines, go." We're guessing it might be more of 50 at a time or 100 or 200, so we need to prioritize within our staff what that looks like, so. We've started having those conversations, HR's working on kind of the next step, and we'll come back to Cabinet to update that, and we'll share that with the board and our staff, hopefully next week or so, too, as we get that finalized, so we're ready. We do not want to be part of the hindrance, we want to be part of the, when it's our time, we're ready to roll, so. Looking forward to that conversation, so. And like I said, hopefully, things will happen faster than they say or they're anticipating, but that has not been the hint we've been given yet at all, so we'll continue to watch. I wish the same urgency to get a bill passed to require schools to be open 100% had the same urgency to get vaccines in teachers' arms at the same speed as well, but so far, that doesn't seem to be directly correlated, so. Couple other COVID updates for you, quarantine procedures, as you know, we've gone through some changes from Lynn County guidance on quarantine procedures as well. We started the year where masks were not part of the formula to determine who was quarantined, and then they changed it and made that part of the process early in our school year, and that helped tremendously, because since we have everybody in schools wearing masks, that really limited who needs to be quarantined, and then when November had the outbreak or the spike, I should say, not the outbreak, but the spike in numbers, and they did everything they could to be extra cautious, so they removed masks from that determination, so it became six feet more closer for 15 minutes or more throughout the course of an entire day. Our quarantine numbers really went high at that point, because masks were no longer part of that determination. Since our Lynn County numbers are better now, and Lynn County is the only state that, our only county in the state that chose that option to do that, the other 98 counties are still operating under the other guidance where masks are part of the factor, we feel like since we're in a better spot now, it's time for us to reconsider the guidance we're following for that. We do not have to follow Lynn County's guidance, we do have to follow Lynn County or Iowa Department of Public Health guidance, so the Iowa Department of Public Health guidance, the more we look at our numbers and feel better about where we're at, we are planning to move forward with the revising our guidance to what we had earlier where masks were part of that determination. Two reasons for, primarily kind of figured out from listening to me ramble on here probably, but basically, we just want to do everything we can to keep students and staff in school and it's safe to do so, I think that's one way, and the second thing is we feel like masks work and they're making a difference for us, so it should be part of that factor as well. There are only a few schools left in Lynn County that are not making that change, so a couple others are debating it tonight or this week, and others have already made that switch, too, so we would not be on an island if we do that, so. Before I made such a drastic change, though, I wanted to have that conversation with boards, see if you have any thoughts, questions, clarifications, and there are some exceptions to that mask piece as well. If you were exposed at home, somebody you're living with, that would not exempt you from that piece as well, it's more that in-school protection piece, so.
Talking to, I'm sorry, all the teachers and all the schools we've been in have all been pretty vocal that masks are not an issue. The kids don't fight it, the teachers don't fight it, the kids are on each other if it happens to come down, so I think it's, like you said, I think earlier, it's working, and it's not like, you know, yes, we're forcing it, but I don't think we have to anymore. I mean, we will, but it's so automatic with children anymore that they don't even think about it, so that's just my thoughts, so.
When are you thinking about making, I'm not opposed to this at all, I think it's probably a good decision, but when are you thinking about making the change?
We'll talk about it Cabinet tomorrow, finalize it, and then pretty much ASAP after that, whether that's Wednesday or the following Monday, we'd determine it to be a pretty quick turnaround, just make sure we'd have time to communicate to everybody so they would know as well.
Anyone else question?
And then just a quick update for you, COVID numbers, I think all of you are tuned into checking that as well, 7.6 today is our number across Lynn Counties, that's continued to slowly drop, which we've been really pleased to see. Our conversation with Lynn County and the hospitals on Friday, they were extremely pleased with the, in fact, the numbers not only have stayed even and avoided the spike, they expected at the holidays, but have gotten better. Their hospital numbers are better, just lots of positives on that front as well, so that was encouraging. Our staffing numbers are better overall as well, we have, we still have a handful of staff and students that are testing positive, but really a smaller number than we saw earlier in the school year, and then our quarantine numbers are starting to climb again as well for the reasons I just mentioned earlier, is that once one person has it, not going to hold class, the second graders add your numbers up pretty quickly, too, so. So for example, our student numbers right now, we have just a handful of staff and students testing positive. Back in November, we were over 100, did my math very quick, about 103 positive tests, and now we just have a handful, so we're in a much better spot from that front, which is encouraging, too, so. I think that's important for us to consider as we really talk about our next steps. As we look at return to learn for the third quarter for our secondary, that's a conversation that we've all been having and struggling with and trying to figure out what's right or what's best going forward, and that's important for us to process kind of where is our current situation, that tried to kind of set the stage for a little bit there, anyway. Really, for us right now, our pre-K 6 has been back for a couple weeks, it's going well, recommend that continuing as is, that's been a positive, get kids back consistently. So we're looking at 712, and in my mind, we're looking at those as two different groups, 7, 8, and 912, for different reasons we'll talk about, but really for me right now, and I've used this term with our administrators lately, it's not a matter of if we return our students to school, it's a matter of when and how, and I think we're all in agreement on, we want our kids back, but how do we do that safely? And that weighs on all of us making those decisions, without a doubt. The other piece of the puzzle that we've mentioned already is that bill going through, all indicators are it's going to happen quickly, like we said, no guarantees, but that's certainly where it feels and sounds like that's happening as well, so whether we make the commitment to come back at the start of the third quarter, or if we wait for the legislature to tell us, it's probably going to be a couple weeks after that, is probably the best we'd be looking at for that timeframe, too, so. Back again to that when and how. So, back again to that when and how conversation. Couple of positive things I just mentioned I want to reiterate because I do feel like that's important for us to set the stage that we have been successful in our models and it has been through a lot of hard work and a lot of good efforts from people to do, too. And that's easily gets lost. But our COVID numbers are better. Staff numbers are better. We've learned a lot. One of you mentioned earlier, it's not seeing the spread in schools. It's happening outside as well. So, that's been important to see, too. We do have some space options, especially in our middle schools that we have not had in the past timeframe because of our opening of Boulder Peak and Hazel Point and removing whole grade levels out of those buildings. So, we have some space flexibility options there as well. So, that's encouraging for us, too. For example, last year at Excelsior, we had 946 students in that building. This year with 6th grade not there, and our students in family choice were at 461 with all of our students in A and B models together. So, that's both of them. Oak Ridge was 831. Last year, we're at 377 with A and B hybrids pushed together as well. You lose a third of your kids to one grade level, and then between 160, 170 to virtual, each building that changes things for you. So, a couple other numbers, a couple if you ask me to look into as well, if we would bring 7th, 8th grade back or when we do. Roughly, the average class size would be as of right now, because families can change their minds. Those numbers will adjust. Excelsior, looking at about 19 kids per class, 19 and a half. That's the average number. And Oak Ridge is about 17 as well. So, still good-sized numbers for us to work with. Some rooms are bigger than that, obviously. That's the nature of averages. It'd be similar to what we're looking at with K-6. We can't guarantee we'll always be able to keep that six-foot space. Do the best we can with that and just be honest about that upfront so people know, and they can make the right choice for them. So, I know this has been a conversation each of us have had. Everybody's struggling with trying to make. But I do feel like when that time comes, we'll be in a good spot and can make the adjustments to keep everybody safe in school as well. Couple of you have asked about lunch. What does that look like? That's an opportunity to, because that's the one time during the school day where we don't have masks. So, that's a little bit different scenario. So, what we look at in both schools is the lunchroom currently using as much space there as we can, spreading out where we, best we can, and open up other areas as well. And both schools are doing that to some degree already, whether that's additional classrooms or additional hallway space or pod areas are already being used as well because of the additional space they have opened this year. Taking advantage of that any way possible to spread out as much as possible, too. Obviously, that's easier in the nice weather of the fall and hopefully in the spring, because then you can even get outside, take advantage of a couple other options, but probably not so much of an option in the month of February or March as much as later on this year, too. So, so with all of that, I think it's time for us to have that conversation about 7th, 8th grade going back and then deciding if that's the start of the third quarter or if that is, do we wait until the governor tells us we have to go back? That's the other piece. The other side I haven't addressed at all is 912. It's a little bit different scenario, I think, with 9th through 12th grade. Two reasons. One, just the vast number of kids with 2,200 students in the building, and then they do not have the space opportunities because of the new building opened up. Boulder Peak and Hazel Point didn't help them at all. So, there's still limits are. Still the same space with roughly the same number of kids trying to make that happen. So, I think that's a little bit different scenario as well. So, with that, I will stop talking and invite your conversations, questions, thoughts as we move to that next steps, then.
Would like to comment. Eric, you have something?
Well, I appreciate all your honesty and all your information, and I think everything is in place. Maybe I'm getting ahead of the curve a little bit, but I would like to make a motion to approve bringing the 7th and 8th graders back school effective February, whatever day that is, the first of the quarter. But I would like to have the high school discussion on another note. That's just my opinions.
Before we have a second to that, I would appreciate others having a bit of time to make comments.
February 2nd? Tuesday, February?
If we went back to start of the third quarter, that'd be Tuesday, February 2nd, because Monday, February 1st is a professional development day for teachers. Correct.
Are there others who'd like to comment about that one way or the other?
I'm not opposed to having the conversation about bringing the middle school students back. I wonder, I would prefer to do a phased approach where, I mean, the bill that's in question that's going to force our hand, it's not requiring us to bring everyone back. It's requiring us to offer the option. So, I would propose a phased approach where we offer the option that if you want your student to come back every day, because I think that there's going to be a significant number of families that would, they like the hybrid. They like that their student can come one day a week with a reduced number of students in the building and still have that option. I don't want them to feel forced into choosing 100% virtual because they're not comfortable with the numbers. But I also recognize that there is an academic component that we're far enough into the year and we have enough experience with COVID that it's time to start addressing that, that second piece where there are students who need to come back. So, I would, I would prefer to give them the option to come back and not make it 100% because that gives families the option. It gives more students the option to come in person if they want, but also take that second day to reduce numbers. I think that would make more families comfortable. That's where I'm sitting. I'm, I'm open. The numbers look good. I'm open to bringing some students back. I just, I want to proceed with caution and keep these, the 7.6% is awesome, and I'd like to help keep it that way. That's where I'm at.
Other comments?
I can address the, the choice option. It's something we've definitely talked about and looked at and to see what would that look like? Because there are some positives to that. Like you said, to be able to phase back in a little bit. But then the, the other side of it is, then you'd have teachers having kids that are 100% online, 100% in person. And then every other day, so you'd essentially have four different groups to coordinate and keep track of as well. So, that would just be a logistical challenge. Not saying we couldn't do it, but it would be, it would address one issue, but then also create some other things for us to consider, too. So, but it's something we have definitely batted around and trying to figure out if that would be feasible, if that would just be trying to please everybody and then in the end, not having the quality we want. And that's, we don't know. We haven't done it. So, that would be the thing to consider, too. So...
I think if, of all the challenges that we've been presented this year, that particular logistical challenge, even though I absolutely see it for what it is, I think that seems like something that we could address in terms of, you know, adding an additional option on the dropdown, whether they are present online or present in person. Like, that just seems like something that we could tackle in a relatively easy way. I do worry about the families who now without the hybrid option opt to go fully virtual. And what does that mean for their students? You know, I, I just wonder, once you've got kids back in the classroom, you're teaching in two platforms as it is anyway. You're teaching online. You're teaching in person. Does the ratio matter as much, especially at that secondary level? At the, at the elementary and intermediate levels, I can absolutely see how that just doesn't work because you have to assign teacher, you have to have whole separate classrooms. But at the secondary level, they're not doing that. They're, you know, they're sort of, you know, you're either learning at home in front of your computer or you're in class, but you're learning the same thing. You see the same thing kind of thing. So, I, I would like to, to hear a little bit more about that option and, you know, I would like to say, you know, here's the side-by-side. We either allow some people to go back in person or we just allow these two options and side-by-side those two and say what would work best for our district.
What I consider that one is, conversation with building principals and with LMEA last week, the trying to do the in-person, online, A-day, and B-day was really not something any of those groups were interested in. Thought that'd be, the negatives outweigh the positives, in essence. Not that they couldn't do it or wouldn't do it, but they were not.
I'd like to hear the reasons why. I'd like to hear the reasons why, you know, what makes one option.
Are we lumping, when you're talking, when you're lumping secondary, that 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12?
Yeah, and I guess I'm only talking about 7, 8 for the purposes of this conversation. I just meant secondary is learning in a particular mode.
Eric, can either you or maybe Nathan, sorry to put you on the spot, but speak to like the functionality of Power School. I've been under the impression as like a parent of students in this kind of frame that they don't really know who's supposed to be in the classroom on any given day. And it's just kind of like, we're taking attendance, and I have my X number of students are there, but I don't see in Power School if like Steve's supposed to be online today or in my class. And it's really just like, that's my concern about throwing a third attendance option in. Is it already, I'm under the impression that it's already hard to manage.
Well, if they're already not able to see it anyway, then I, I guess that to me speaks for more of a reason. They're already operating blind. Then I don't, you know, I don't understand how this third option makes that more complicated.
And I can address that, I can address that specific question first, too, and then open it up from there. But yeah, we've been very flexible with people, which we, was one of our goals all the way through. But that flexibility has gotten too loose in my mind, and I think that's been feedback I've heard as well. Because we've tried to allow, if a student is in person, they're supposed to be in person, but then they're kind of sick. Well, they can just log in the next day, or they can kind of make a choice of a, then we also have some students that are in legitimate quarantine, need to be able to access online when they're normally in person. It's become too gray or just, so it becomes a point where teachers, they know, well, you're supposed to be here in A-day, but you're logged in on Zoom today. Well, maybe you'll be back in person the next day. Maybe you won't. So, it's gotten to be too messy. So, if and when we get to that point where we bring everybody back, we need to tighten that up. Essentially, say, you are either in person or you are online. The only exception to that would essentially be if you're quarantined. Do we need to for an extended time period that way or more of a permission to do that? Because right now, it's, it's extremely fluid, and that's really hard for teachers to plan if they're trying to coordinate with a group or different efforts to instructionally support kids to know if they're in person or not. So, so yeah, that's a challenge without a doubt.
Forgive me if I'm oversimplifying attendance. I mean, I'm not a teacher, and it's been a long time since I've been in a classroom. But is it not, you have a class list, and Rachel, are you here? Yes or no? And if you don't hear a voice, they're absent. Is that not how we, and then at the end of the day, you've got your class list. You tap the check mark for who was there and a check mark for who isn't? Is that not?
In theory, yes. It's not even the attendance piece of it as much as it is to know, you're playing to work with a student in person that day, and they're not there, then they are on virtual. They show up. It just changes that dynamic of what you're trying to accomplish as well. So, it's partially the attendance. It's partially then also a teacher trying to plan for the whole group, but also for individuals. This makes it very complex.
I understand that part. I just thought maybe taking attendance was a little more, a little simpler than that. I get the small group work and all of the planning. I just feel like if we can offer families that option, that's, that's, and, and we can ease students back in, in a phased approach, that just seems to be the safer, smarter option in my mind.
Clark?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to preface what I'm about to say. If we recall what I, what we discussed prior to Christmas break, and we ask the patrons of the district to be very diligent on the mask and who they see and what they do. And as I look at the positivity percentage here, they've done that, and I want to congratulate the district. But this is one of those types of things that as we get our plan of return to learn, it's important to understand that, yes, it's very, you know, sometimes a bit scary on how we do this because we always want to move towards what's best for the, the student and best for the staff. People have, some have contacted me and concerned with what Shannon was saying about the lunchroom and stuff like that. When we're in the hybrid model with less students, it was easier. Our staff has done a fantastic job, just absolutely superb to have these numbers like that. And a lot of that's because not only of the patrons in the district, but who we have in our schools. And with coming back to the 7th and 8th grade all-in class, I just want to have those people have true diligence because you're going to be dealing with more people. And maybe because of certain lunchroom situations in another classroom, might have to cover a little bit differently. But I, I think the way we're doing it and what we're, and, and how we're doing it is going to be a benefit. With, in regard to coming back, I think all of us want us to get back into the classroom. I think that is the best. We all have to be cautious. This whole coronavirus has made us that way. And I just think that when you get the kids back in there, those that might be struggling with virtual learning and stuff like that, you'll have the teacher there to ask questions and to help them. Those students that are already getting it, I think the teacher's not going to have to spend an enormous amount of time dealing with them and more time dealing with those that are struggling, you know? And I think those that are struggling will be, you know, responsible for what they're learning in there instead of something virtual and they're not there for some particular reason. And once they see that they're getting help from that teacher, I think we're going to see a very strong improvement relatively quickly with how, how they're handling that, because now they have a person to talk to. Now, they have somebody to ask a question. And not only do they have a question, but they got somebody that can give them the answer and help them with, with the problems that we're having. And I, I agree that we have to be cautious, but, you know, I agree with what Shannon said. If we give too many pieces and parts, it's a tremendous amount of, not necessarily physical, but emotional aspect for teachers. If you have to do all three or four things that we're trying to get done to cover, cover everything. I, I still think that the best thing is to get them back in, into the classroom. We always have the option if things fail and we see numbers going up. We've done the other things, whether it's a hybrid or, or a virtual learning, to fall back on, you know? But I, I, I don't know. I don't know if I'm trying to be optimist, too optimistic, but I try to want to be cautious. But I think getting them back into the, to the building and with their teacher is great. And I want to emphasize what you said, Shannon, in regards to how much room that we have now that the 6th grade is out of both of those schools. And when you quote those numbers, that's, that's, to me, very significant. And we, you know, outside of when I taught at Colo, I've never seen class sizes so small as 17 and 19 ever since I've been to Lindmar, unless it might be some advanced class, AP class or something like that. But when you said 17 and 19, that's, you know, that's pretty darn good. Matter of fact, I, I never had a class with that in there, and that was before the numbers were like, were predicted. So, I guess there's where I stand. I hope that's not as clear as mud, but...
I want to ask then, so from your meeting with LMEA, their preference would be to have the kids, family choice, and then the rest of the kids back 100% in person?
From the, yeah, the group we met with last Wednesday, the feedback from that group was the doing four different groups would be, would be something they would really struggle to do. It was not put to them as which would you prefer, but as we were talking through the bill, that's the whole conversation initially came up was discussing the, the bill that was working its way through the Senate at the time and the impact and clarifying, what does that mean when you say 100% choice for families? Does that mean everybody's coming back or have a choice to come back? So, that's how we started that conversation. And then the reservations from the teachers at that time where that would be, would be challenging. Now, I didn't do a roll call vote to see if that was unanimous with the group, but that was definitely the sense from that group as that was not their preference.
So, they prefer the...
Yes. Yeah. And that informal conversation, that was definitely the, the feel of that conversation. Yep.
So, anyone else?
I got, I have a couple of questions first. Just 116...
Just the hundred and sixteen to a hundred and seventy per school and virtual, are those, are they signed up for the third quarter then?
That's open right now, so those numbers will go up and down through Wednesday is the day still people can sign up.
But we would expect that to be.
As of right now, that's where the numbers are.
Okay.
I think district wide, about a hundred and twenty signed up to return. I'm not sure maybe we'd have to go back, but that will, I do think those numbers will change based on what our decision is at some point too. But as of today, that's what those numbers were.
And then second question is, at the seventh and eighth grade level, isn't virtual done by separate teachers?
No, the five, six is done by separate teachers. Seventh grade, the classroom teachers are teaching the dual platform, so they are.
I get, I, I thank you. I guess my thoughts are, I'm, you know, my preference would be to stay hybrid. Nope. But I understand the desire to go a hundred percent, right? I get that. I guess for me, I, I kind of like the phased approach, even if we said it was for a quarter or, you know, offered that for, for families. I don't know how many are going to take that up and maybe it's not, maybe it's not that many. I, I don't know. But I, I kind of like that, that phased approach of kind of moving it in for a period of time, even if you time limited it or not, you know? I do have, you know, going a hundred percent, take the legislature out of it, makes me a little more nervous. From the staff point of view, I would rather have, you know, like we said earlier, COVID vaccines. You want to get a hundred people, a hundred percent back at all schools, let's vaccinate the teachers and, and do that. But I guess that's where I kind of stand, is I prefer kind of phase it in would be my.
Barry, you have a motion. Would you like to repeat your motion?
I could repeat that, yeah. And it's, it's great discussion, you know, because this is not an easy decision to make, you know? And we want to, we're here to educate our children. We have to remember that. So my motion is to bring seventh and eighth grade back full time, starting on February the second. And like you said, we still go back to the family choice, so that the families still have a choice to stay online a hundred percent, if that's what they desire. And I mean, that's my motion, so.
There a second?
I have a second.
So we need to take a vote here. All those in favor of?
Can I just make a comment? I mean, I guess I, I'm going to vote no, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. Is, is, even though I vote no, I still support the board's decision moving forward. I just feel that I'm just a little more conservative and I, I got no problem with that. I, I know that Shannon do a great job and he's thought this through with his cabinet. I just, but that's why I'm, I'm going to vote no. I, you know, I'll support the board's decision to move forward and a hundred percent behind it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to say, I'm also going to vote no. I will support the decision. But the phased approach allows us, as Clark said, if the numbers spike, if we bring everybody back, there's not a way to say, okay, only half of you can come tomorrow and we're going to scale that back. And if the bill passes, we can't go back to hybrid without a waiver, like completely. So I think it limits our options if things ramp up. So that's why I'm voting no, but I understand where everyone's coming from.
That's interesting. Can you repeat that, Brad?
So if the bill passes, then we have to offer a one hundred percent online option.
As an option?
As an option. So if we bring everyone back and our numbers spike and that bill passes, we can't opt to just go back to hybrid. We would then have to have those three options available.
You could offer hybrid though.
Well, but the staff is opposed to that because of the, so it just, if we don't.
Things change, that could be revisited. Yeah, you're right.
So if our numbers go back up, we kind of end up in that situation. If we offer a hybrid, we still have to offer a hundred percent in-person option. So we'll end up with that, with that phased approach anyway.
Yes.
If the bill goes through, if we're in hybrid at that point, it would, yes.
I, I, I like the phased approach simply because it gives us more options as we move forward. I'm not saying for the whole quarter. I was, maybe it's only for February. Maybe we, I don't know. That's why I'm voting no. I just wanted to clarify that, that.
I think I could be in support of that, hadn't we talked about this two weeks ago? I feel like the third quarter starts February 2nd and we're asking then, like, I think, you know, we're asking then, hey, you've got four days, so if you can figure this out, that'd be awesome, because this is what we've said you're going to do. I think that's my problem with that is it's such a short time to.
Should we wait then and not say next Tuesday, everything changes?
I guess my perspective is the best thing to do is to make the decision at the beginning of the new quarter.
It wouldn't have to be made then, but it's a natural breaking point for that conversation.
Pardon me, Kara, what? I'm sorry, Rachel. What, what did you say? I, I missed because of my hearing.
Oh, I just, I feel like to throw in like an additional option for parents, like we are on such a short time to figure out who's going to be showing up, what we're going to do with them, where they're supposed to be, give parents the opportunity to decide by adding in an additional attendance option. Because that's really what we're looking at. We're either looking at online only or in person, or like the phased approach is you can choose online only, you can choose hybrid, or you can choose a hundred percent in person.
I think the nice thing that's accessible for.
Well, and the nice thing about middle school, as opposed to making like a, a change in the elementary level, is that it's the same teacher in the same class. So their schedule doesn't change, their teacher doesn't change. So if we say it's a phased approach, it's four days. Maybe we don't say it's on Monday because their schedule's not going to change. If at the next meeting, we say this, or we say in two weeks, you have two weeks to make your choice, it doesn't change their schedule, it doesn't change their teacher. And they, maybe we give them two weeks to decide what their attendance is going to be. Because their schedule's not going to change. So I don't know. I just, that's.
I don't see that as being a more difficult choice. I really don't. I do, is, is, it is another option. I don't think that that's more difficult. In fact, for some it'll be easier, because I think there really are a group that are struggling with this.
Do you mean for parents or teachers?
While we were discussing parents, are we not?
Well, no, I felt like throwing that third option is a lot to put on the staff in addition to sourcing the information from parents. So like, it's a short time for everybody, really.
Well, but I don't, but okay, that's fair, that's fair, but then why haven't we been discussing it? I mean, it's not like, you know, it's certainly seems like in the realm of possibilities. So then why hasn't there been an order of a discussion of what the options are? I mean, even in this discussion right now, it sort of feels like, there's not real, I don't really feel like there's like a ton of option right now, because I'm not really being presented with anything aside from what it's going to look like if we decide to go back in person.
Essentially, we have three options. We continue doing what we're doing until the legislature tells us otherwise. We make the commitment to go back in person and still offer the family choice option, or we do what we just discussed with giving the families the, the fourth choice, or our third choice, I guess, of a hundred percent online in addition to the other two. The whole, you asked about the timing of why we haven't discussed this more in the past. Essentially, when the bill was proposed a couple of weeks ago, or I guess it'd be the governor's, state of the state is when it probably first mentioned the hundred percent return option. We didn't know if that was going to look like it actually in a bill format. Was that just sort of wording that day? Was it going to be truly an option for families? Or is it going to require schools to be a hundred percent? So when that bill first came out a week and a half ago, so we started having those conversations administratively as well. And it just didn't get any traction because of concerns about how that would work. And it becomes basically a free for all of which kids are coming today because they have to, which ones are sleeping in, so they didn't quite make it that day. It just, it becomes really loose on that front. And then the feedback from LMEA conversation kind of supported that as well, so we didn't take it any farther at that point. So that's why it hasn't gotten more traction up to this point. Short timeframe and just the initial conversations, it didn't really have any supporters.
That's, that's fair, and I, I hear what you're saying. But we were going to be discussing a possibility of returning in person regardless of what the governor said, because we were, we, we promised that we would have that discussion at the beginning of second, you know, when we discussed about going back for second quarter. So we knew this conversation was coming regardless of what the governor said or not, that there was going to be some discussion about returning, when we might do that and how we might do that. So this was always a potential option. It just sounds like it was decided that, that it was not a good option.
Yes, but also it was a potential option always, like you said, but it wasn't one that we really even thought about of having people have the option of a hundred percent early on, because we were trying to control our numbers and see where we were at with everything as well.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about having this third option of allowing an, an option for, for students to come back if they wanted to, but for a hybrid to remain, a hybrid option to remain.
Correct.
We're in the middle of a vote. Are we, do, have we talked?
Are we in the middle of a vote? Because it sounds like.
We're in a second.
There is a motion. We had two people who made a statement, and so now we, we need to officially, I think, take the vote. Are we, because the motion is that we are sending seventh, seventh and eighth graders back onsite with the family choice option still, but otherwise that is what we are voting on. Okay, that's my understanding. So we need to go ahead and do that, I believe, because I think we've kind of hashed it all out and we kind of know where we're coming from. So I don't, you know, I guess we can just do a call and if we can't tell them, we'll break it down? Would that be the best way?
Clarify it that way.
Okay, if that makes sense to everybody. Okay, if you're in favor of this motion, will you please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. If you are not, will you please say aye? Nay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Wait, three nays and four yeses. So it passes. We will be going back.
Now, but now we need to discuss the high school, right? Don't need to discuss that, or are we going to leave that alone?
We can either discuss it as far as next steps, or if we don't make any changes to the high school, then there's really nothing to discuss at this stage, except confirming that essentially.
I'll just make one comment on that, and we can hash it all night, I'm sure, if we want to. But I really think that pressure's going to be on your shoulders and on Jeff and his leadership team at the high school, because it sounds like that's going to be a real, real challenge with the numbers that we have there. And if we get forced into that, what can we do? Or is that not a fear factor that we should have hanging over our shoulders?
Yeah.
Well, you had said that you guys are already talking about that. What can you do? What should we do? What does it look like? So they're already in discussion about.
Because most of us don't have, we, I don't have a skill set to handle that. Those are the things that have to be handled from, from that, from that level sincerely, because it's, it's a challenge, yeah.
As you're having these discussions, I would be curious, with twenty-two hundred students, is it going to be all or nothing, like we just decided for the middle school? Or our high school, a family is going to be allowed to opt to continue hybrid if they choose?
Yeah, I think that's certainly a conversation we could have, because it's a little bit different setup of the high school. The concern of the space challenges and number of kids. I think the, the conversation we just had on a various options for families, when we dig in more and see is that a viable option for that building to help solve the challenge of what we may be directed to do in the next few weeks as well. So I think that's the definite option on the table. It doesn't have to be all or nothing.
I think we have, I think we have some time, some time, maybe not a whole lot, to look at the high school. I think a lot of it might depend on how this pans out for the seventh and eighth grade. You know, that's going to give us at least an idea, maybe if the direction is still going the same way, you know, with, with a lower positivity rate. You know, I think it might be.
Yeah.
We've had some great discussion here, and I think it's going to continue when you get to the high school. And like Britt was saying, when you, and Rachel, when you're talking about twenty-two hundred, that, that's a, that's a different, a different cog into the, the decision-making. But I still think as we, as we look at the seventh and eighth grade, that's going to give us a little bit of an indicator of maybe the direction that this dreaded coronavirus is, is going. But the point that you made, Shannon, in that high school, that we don't have the option of like we do in the seventh, eighth, the five, and the five, six, where we have somebody, a, a whole class leaving, and we're going to be more, more confined. But I, I think we have some, a little bit of time through this third quarter to keep taking a look at the prospects of what we might have.
We essentially have two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's two weeks.
If the bill proceeds like it is.
I mean, for like the fourth quarter.
But if the bill passes, they want it enacted this week in February. So we have two weeks to figure this out.
So if, if we're already in the process of discussing it, or the cabinet and Jeff and Shannon and all, and we're looking at that, and then we can also think about the options like we discussed that for me for junior high, which we've decided not to do, where we could keep them with hybrid. I mean, the, the teachers are going to be doing the classes at the high school virtual and onsite at the same time. It's just rather there, all the kids are there or half of them are there. Maybe we can figure out some way to do some kind of a hybrid with the option of coming every day. I don't know that, but that's the discussions that you guys can have, because you can see where the board is at and, and what we're thinking going forward. And that's even more important when you get more kids. When you get twenty-two hundred kids, that's even more important. So anyway, Tim, did you have a comment?
Quick thing that maybe something that would help me and maybe others is, is I always think of twenty-two hundred kids, but there's, how many kids are at Kirkwood? How many are big? How many are doing? How many kids will we actually have in a building, you know? Are we really talking eighteen hundred, not twenty-two hundred? I, I don't know. If you could remind us of that, I would appreciate that over the next couple of weeks as you.
At the moving targets, I can give you a snapshot.
Just give me the best estimate, right?
Yeah, kind of approximately every day.
Not, not tonight, but in the future.
Not tonight, no, over the next, over time.
That's a good point.
I think Britt is right, that we've got two weeks on that decision probably before. So the next board meeting, that'll be a focus for us to, to look at and see. And in the meantime, we'll do some digging to see some possibilities of maybe what we talked about tonight. Maybe it's some little variation of that, but I don't think it has to be necessarily all or nothing either, so I think that's.
Well, you know, just to pick up with, I understand that there's two weeks. And that might not be ideal considering how the legislature might go. But it does give us, does give us some time. And in that two weeks, probably have at least an estimate of what Tim was talking about in, in regards to on the average, how many people? Because if, obviously the big people, they know that they're going to be out. And who knows with MECO, they might be doing some of those apprenticeships and stuff like that. But we know who the, you know, we will know who those are. I realize it's a guesstimate, but it's at least an educated try to do it the right way. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to say that we also have students, more students on release at the high school too than we have had before. And maybe that's an option that we can kind of keep in through the end of the school year. I know originally it was thought, once all of the students are back in the high school, we'll have to kind of take that privilege away from freshmen, but that's another. Like all of these drivers that are pulling high schoolers out of the building, and as much as we can continue that to, in, while still keeping them safe and properly educated.
Yeah, especially at that age of students, there's some options there that we don't have at the other grade levels to look at for flexibility and given the space, because that will be really important for us to be able to do, to provide that safe environment that we want when kids come back.
What is the process for seven, twelve, if, if families are hearing our conversation, especially seven, eight, and they don't want their kid to do one hundred percent in person anymore because of this? What is the process for them to switch to family choice? Because I know they don't have to choose by whence, they don't have the form and whatnot. But I think including that in the communication that goes out.
Yep. And that's why we extended the deadline a couple of days, knowing this conversation, we weren't quite sure where that was going to be going at that time. So in our communication next couple of days, that will be clarified for them as far as how they can, because their situ, the situation has changed. We want to give them the opportunity to adjust their decision as well.
So should we move on to, yes, five oh two, a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the final payment number two in the amount of $2,390.72 to Ratty Construction and accept the Alvernet Road Echo Hill Road Turn Lane Project as complete.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other, any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the bid of $446,608 for $111,652 each for the purchase of four Bluebird 78 Transit diesel buses for school bus sales.
Questions?
Came in on the budget.
Yeah, we initially approved $550,000 for bus bids. And also the intent, when we did that in December, we were going to replace with propane buses. did that in December, we were going to replace with propane buses.
That's what I was thinking.
The reason we're not doing that is, right now, the propane buses are, still only come in conventional style. Our preferred buses are the flat, you know, face buses, and so we were anticipating that one of the manufacturers was going to have an engine to go in a transit-style bus, because of COVID, that got pushed back here, so that's, we don't want any more conventional buses, so that's the reason why we're going to stick with the diesel transit buses this time around.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes, new business. 6:01?
I move to approve the high school program of studies, exhibit 601.1-2.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. 602, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve setting a public hearing for 5:00 PM on February 8th, 2021, for the approval of the plans and specifications for the Indian Creek HVAC project.
Okay. Okay. Um, any discussion, clarification, JT?
Yeah, sure, this is, this is for the rooftop unit above the gym at Indian Creek, and we kind of accelerated this project due to DeRajio. We can replace that roof section, so thought it'd be best while we're doing that to go ahead and replace that unit, which was on the docket for, in the next year or two anyway. So the project is probably going to exceed the bid threshold, so that's why we're going through the formal publication and whatnot. Probably around $150,000 is the initial estimate for that unit, but we'll do bids in February and then have a final approval in March for that.
Well, it makes sense to do that and then do the roof, so that we're not going back on a freshly redone roof and walking all around and everything, so that makes sense. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. 603?
Make a motion to approve the School Budget Review Committee Resolution requesting a modified supplemental amount of $1,941,540 to cover initial staffing costs related to the opening of Boulder Peak Intermediate and Hazel Point Intermediate as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about this. This is going to be part of my, my budget presentation. But with the addition of Boulder Peak and Hazel Point, we have the opportunity to request one-time spending authority from the SBRC for the initial staffing costs. These are for new positions only, so a lot of the staff are transfers, you know, from elementary buildings. Those, those particular positions don't count in this, it's the new staffing, and it's also staff costs that are not paid with categorical funds, so like, we can't include our specialized teachers in this particular request. So there's about $2.5 million of new staff additions total between the two buildings, so 1.9 million is the, the total request that we're asking for. It requires board resolution to move forward with this process, and then what will happen in March, March 16th, we'll have to actually go in front of the SBRC, kind of plead our case, or show them the exhibits and documents, and hopefully get approval from them for this particular spending authority. And it's similar in that this is a request for additional spending authority, as far as actually, are we going to levy cash back for those funds? That will be determined over the course of how we, the certified budget process. With this larger amount, I don't know if we would want to do that in one fell swoop, because we have to be mindful of what the total tax rate is going to be. So we might try to recover this cash over a, a number of years rather than in one single year, just depending on where our tax rate is going to land, so. Quick, high-level explanation, hopefully it makes sense, but...
Thank you. We appreciate it. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. To early graduation requests.
Make a motion to approve the early graduation request as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. I just want to wish them all well, and, and in whatever their endeavor is, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of the policy recommendations as presented.
Okay.
Any questions with this? We talked a little bit about it earlier, but seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, open enrollment request.
I move to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions along the way there?
I'd just like to congratulate Karen Sykes for, on her retirement, as a Link Grove custodian, and thank her for the service to the teachers and the students of our district.
All righty. Anyone else? Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, scary. Let's see, okay, we're to Board Communications. Thursday, we have a visit at Bowman Woods, 11:30. I would say let Gala know if you can be there, and if you think you can and then can't, if you just text Shannon or myself, then we'll know that you're not coming for some reason, which is perfectly fine. Then we won't be waiting for you, that kind of thing.
Will this, will this weather have anything to do with the possibility of...
Hopefully not by Thursday.
I never want to say no to the weather, but...
I want it to be melted by the time we get out.
We'll plan on it.
It's not get crazy.
We'll plan on it either way, and if it doesn't work for some reason, because of schedule changes because of the weather, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But just so you know too, Tina and her team have a extensive tour planned, as you'll be back, so we've got committed an hour. So if you need to come and go because of work or family obligations, please know that's what we're planning, but feel free to leave and come as you need to.
I have high entertainment expectations.
It might be a little longer than some of our other visits.
Yes.
I have high entertainment expectations for my program.
She set the bar herself.
Singing and dancing and everything.
Every year she does. So, February 2nd, the Marion Legislative Day, that's virtual, if you're interested.
They want you to register. They want you to register.
I think so.
No charge, but prefer to RSVP register if you can.
And February, what is it, 4th, Lynn County Board, oh, Barry gets to go to that one, so, it's a virtual. And City Council, Kara, next time, and then I will be doing it February 18th. Any other, oh, there's a board visit coming up in February at Excelsior, so that's awesome. Is there anything else?
If the Marion Legislative Day doesn't work, Grant Wood is having one this Friday, and then another one in February, so those are some alternative options as well. And I know Grant Wood wants you to register as well, but it's free.
Yeah, I think Grant Wood runs at 4 o'clock this Friday, and that will be more education-focused than the Marion Legislative Day, but gives you a chance to get a flavor of both perspectives.
I, I, not a calendar item, but just a comment.
Yes.
I was going to say that, you know, I know, a lot of discussion on starting Venture, leaving Iowa Big, but just to remind everybody, when we, when we started the journey and we made a decision at the beginning to go Iowa Big, we had decided to maybe go on our own, and we thought, let's go Iowa Big, but our goal was always to have our own program. So I'm excited that we're going to have our own program, we can tweak it, there's many great things that, from Iowa Big, and as we kind of move forward, you know, I'll call it Lindmarize it, so I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to that, and, you know, hopefully we'll, you know, I know our plan is to take over what, what we liked about Iowa Big, and then maybe make some different improvements that work better for our district, right? Not that there's anything wrong with Iowa Big. So I'm excited about that, and I know probably year one is going to change, it will be different than it will be in year five, and I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to that as we kind of go through that eventually. But I, it was always kind of our plan to have something.
It really was. We looked at a lot of different ones and decided to go that way. When it was first starting, we kind of jumped in with Cedar Rapids and, and then went from there, so, yeah.
It's truly a win-win. We've had a great experience, and now it's a chance for us to, like you said, build our own and learn from our growth the next couple of years, and we're excited about what we can put together and offer too.
Well, I like the comment that the one student made, that, you know, for us to think about, and we've had people involved in Iowa Big, so looking at what mistakes they had to begin with, so that we don't make them again, you might say, so what are their successes, how they did it? You know, we can learn from others and certainly apply it, and I think we have, it looks like, from what we're doing with the Venture Program, but just to keep our minds open to that, too.
Plus, we've had teachers that are involved, involved with it.
Absolutely, true, the whole thing.
Yeah, at least two that I know of, so they could give some strategic input, I would think.
Yeah.
Since we're on this topic, I want to say thank you to the students that wrote in.
Yes, that was awesome.
And, I mean, there's a lot of passion there.
Yes.
And if we can tap into that student experience to make Venture stronger, I would encourage the district to do that. I think that's, they feel they're not being heard, and I, so that, that would be my one. I'm very excited about Venture, I've been on board since my first conversation, so, but a lot of good happened at Iowa Big, and I would hate to lose that connection and that, that intel, so I would please talk to the students and gather what they...